Good evening. We will start the meeting by Councilmember Scott Morgan offering the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Tonight is the 1,938th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting held on Monday, February 28th of 2022. I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the roll call for the meeting.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present.
Okay, so you will note that six of us are physically appearing before you and another one of our members, Vice President Toy, is appearing with us via audio connection. This is though, well, this is pursuant to an opinion of the Michigan Attorney General's Office accommodating Laura's particular circumstances as they fall under the Americans with Disabilities Act. We're glad to have Ms. Toy with us, at least in spirit and in voice and in hearing range here, and we look forward to having her back in person as soon as possible.
President Jolly?
Yes.
We just have to ask Ms. Toy one quick question. Vice President Toy, where you are right now, we have to know location, just like before.
Laura, can you tell us where you are physically located?
I'm in my home.
Thank you.
All right. So, can I have a motion in regards to the meeting minutes of the 1,937th regular meeting from January 31, 2022?
I will move approval.
Support.
Motion from McIntyre, support from Barr. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, can you take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye.
So, the minutes have been approved. This is the portion of our meeting set aside for audience communication. Does anybody in the audience wish to approach and speak to the council in regards to something that is not on the agenda this evening? There appears to be no audience communication. With us tonight are some great department heads from the city administration. We have Mr. Paul Bernier, our city attorney, Ms. LaShawn Thomas, our governmental relations director, Ms. Nash, our city clerk, Ms. Sarah Casperitz, the manager of the city council office, Mark Toramina, the director of planning and economic development, and Todd Zalinsik, our city engineer. We also have some department heads, including the mayor and the audience and Mr. Rushlow as well. They will approach, if appropriate, for a particular topic. So, we'll go to the council. Does anybody on the council have any announcements, motions, or anything to address? Mr. Barr?
Mr. President?
Yes, Laura, we'll go to you first. We'll go to Ms. Toy.
If I'm good, Mr. President, I do have a proclamation from our mayor and hopefully from all of us. It is in regards to the 211. It's the United Way that sponsors that for Southeastern Michigan. It dedicated to ensuring all households in Southeastern Michigan are stable and all children set up to thrive. Also, whereas the United Way of Southeastern Michigan is to operate, the Michigan 211 Wayne County, which was launched in 2002 to expand in Southeastern Michigan. And they do some wonderful things, Mr. Chair and others. They have a helpline that's available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, from phone, email, live chat, and online business. Their region covers natural disasters, including recent flooding and global crisis, and it also includes COVID-19 testing and vaccine locations. It has served more than 1,300 individuals from our city that contacted 211 since with things like housing, job training, utility assistance, food, and other resources in just last year alone. So, whereas February 11th is 211 and the month they're proclaiming for February for 211 community care advocates to recognize, which is celebrated throughout this month, as I stated, therefore, we as the council of the city of Livonia hereby resolve that February 20th, 22, be recognized as the United Way for Southeastern Michigan 211 Month in Livonia, Michigan, and encourage all citizens to join in recognizing this organization and its service to our community and others. But this is signed with this by our mayor, Marine Miller Brosnan, and all of us, I would hope. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. It's obviously a worthwhile cause, and we're happy to support that with that recognition. We'll go to Mr. Barr. He's got something for the council.
Yeah, different from that topic.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, just something. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, we've had some, a couple of larger snowstorms recently, and I know I'm far from the only person that has noticed and been frankly appalled by the lack of clearing of our major Wayne County roads. And I just wanted to bring that up tonight. With the storm that we had, what was that, about two weeks ago? The one that we, the kids had three days off of school, whenever that was, two, three weeks ago. It was three days into that storm, all of the residential streets in Livonia were cleared. And if I remember right from what Todd told us at a meeting recently, I think it's 376 or something like that miles? 373 miles of residential streets were all cleared, and our major Wayne County roads, three days after that storm, still were not cleared. We had a snowstorm on Super Bowl Sunday. Monday night, coming back from dinner with my wife from Valentine's Day, we're coming down five-mile road 24 hours after what I think we would all say was a significant storm, but not a major storm. And five-mile, we're still sliding down five-mile because it's not cleared. Then I saw pictures this week that purportedly, I didn't independently verify this, but purportedly there's a different look within Redford and Northville on some of those same major roads. But even just putting that aside, I guess, Mr. Chair, what I'd like to do is request that the administration would look into seeing if we can bring someone from Wayne County roads to a future council meeting. By future, I'm hoping soon, so that we can ask them what's going on. Because we can't continue to have this kind of performance in the clearing of our roads. It's just totally unacceptable, in my opinion. And similar to how we had on another issue recently where they were nice enough to come in and talk to us directly about what was going on with another roads issue, I'd like to do the same thing here. And so, not a resolution or anything, but I'd just like to respectfully ask the administration if they could look into seeing if we could pull that off for a future council meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Ms. McIntyre has a few items, I believe, including the retirees who have recently retired from the city.
I do have the retirees. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The retirees for January 2022 are Michael Magda, who has been a battalion fire chief, a battalion chief from the Fire Department for 27 years of service; Laura Claypool, a senior police officer with 25 years of service; and Denise Stadler, a custodian from DPW with 13 years of service. And the city would like to thank all three of these individuals for outstanding service and dedication to our city. And I guess, coincidentally, all three of these individuals all provided invaluable services to the city, especially during the COVID outbreak. So, we wish them all well in their retirement.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Please continue.
The other issue that I wanted to bring up and related to retirees is we had notification that there was an issue with a sprinkler head in City Hall this week that has caused the annex to be closed. I'm not sure if it still is. But on the subject, two issues. On the subject of that, I would assume, because it sounds like it's not an exceptionally large amount of damage, that the cost for those repairs will not be exorbitant. And, but also just a reminder to DPW that, and the administration actually, that the council is still waiting for details about the $80,000 breakdown of the repairs for the electrical fire that took place over at the Fire Department last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
And actually, one other. We had a notification from the Great Lakes Water Authority earlier today just advising everyone living in low-lying areas about the possibility of flooding due to heavy rainfall beginning this afternoon through this evening, and then I guess it's turning to a wintry mix. They don't, do not expect any problems with the GLWA sewer systems, but there will be more runoff than usual probably because the ground is still frozen from the recent extended string of cold water. And we just asked residents, and as we know, some areas of the city have experienced difficulties, just to be vigilant tonight. And if you have things of great value on the floor of your basement, you might want to consider moving those to higher ground. As always, the city is attentive and responsive to flooding issues and other DPW and public service issues. So, thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to start off with congratulating Livonia Stevenson Wrestling. They were district champions. I wrestled at Frost Middle School, and I wasn't good enough to wrestle at Churchill, but go Chargers. But I'm also excited to see Stevenson do well in being district champs. Also, a few of my colleagues and I were participating in the Livonia Chamber of Commerce Forum with Livonia leaders. It was a pretty great discussion with individuals from Alpha USA, Schoolcraft College, Livonia Public Schools, Clarenceville Public Schools, Madonna St. Mary's, and a few others I'm probably forgetting. It was a really great discussion with people from all across our city, participating in what their jobs are like and what the future of our community looks like. Just a lot of people in Livonia that care about our city and our future, and it was really nice to see representation from our city council there. And I'm looking forward to having future discussions with all of them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, President Jolly. A couple items. One, if you guys are looking to do something on Friday night, I've been asked to skate for the Westland Wild Wings hockey team that's going to be facing off against the Red Wings alumni. Mayor Bill Wild has stole me over, just like we stole him over back in November, or actually, October. Some good names. They said Dave Coulier is going to be there, Alia Frady, Johnny O'Grodnick, Larry Murphy. So, if you want to see us get beat up, just like we did, raising funds in October for Livonia, please feel free. Some information's on their website. It starts at 7:30. I believe tickets are $10, and funds go directly to Mike Madonna Ice Arena for capital expenditures in the future. The second item, it's more of a housekeeping item. Back on 9/8/2021, Resolution 276-21 was adopted by council. Inadvertently, a lot of the documentation was not included for council. Again, this is a housekeeping item, so I'm going to ask that this be added to the agenda for voting, if possible. And I'm going to read it verbatim in front of me. Having considered the report and recommendation of the Director of Housing Commission dated July 30, 2021, which bears the signature of the Director of Finance and the City Attorney, and is approved for submission by the mayor, which first represents proposed hold harmless contracts between the city of Livonia and First Step, Fair Housing Center of Metropolitan Detroit, Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, Cruz Clinic, Hagera Programs, Inc., Stone Brook Counseling Associates, PLLC, and Collaborative Health Center for a period, obviously retro, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, in connection with the CDBG-funded Victim Assistance, Fair Housing Initiative, and Mental Health Counseling Program. That's the verbiage that I have. We can add that to be voted on.
Mr. McCullough, would you like to offer that as a motion at this time?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
I'll support.
Excuse me. There is a, the portion that's in bold.
Oh, okay. Let me add to that before Mr. Donavick adds his support. The council does hereby authorize the mayor, city clerk, and housing director for and on behalf of the city of Livonia to execute hold harmless contracts that are acceptable to the Law Department as to form and content, as well as to do other things necessary or incidental to the full performance of this resolution. I just wanted to test you. Make sure you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. I believe we have support on that item from Mr. Donavick. Is there any comments from the council? There appears to be none. Any comment from the audience? I believe this is just an item of housekeeping. It's something that was previously approved by the council, but clerically was not in the right order. Seeing no comments, Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on this?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Nash. Ms. McIntyre?
We have one other matter of housekeeping, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is, because I believe what Vice President Toy offered was not just a commendation, it was proclamation to approve February as 211 month. That does need a resolution. The commendation does not, but the proclamation does.
I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, rather. Would you like to make a motion for that?
Well, I think that, I don't know if Laura intended, if Vice President Toy intended to offer the motion. If she did, I'll be happy to support it.
If you'll support it.
Certainly.
All right, so.
So, I'm supporting Vice President Toy's resolution to, I'm sorry, proclamation to declare February as 211 month in Livonia.
Okay. Any audience or council communication on that matter? There appears to be none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The proclamation has support of all seven council members and is passed. Thank you. At this time, I'll note for the public that we have an upcoming public hearing on March 7 of 2022, and that we have new data on item number 12A that we will see later on in the agenda. We have reports and communications from the mayor and other city officials, specifically a communication from the Department of Finance dated January 24, 2022, regarding the forwarding of various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending in October 30 of 2021, and also a communication from the Department of Finance dated January 24, 2022, regarding the forwarding of quarterly investment report for the city of Livonia for the quarter ending November 30 of 2021. With that, we will now move to the agenda and the items before us for the regular meeting here tonight. Items 1 through 11 are listed on the consent agenda. Those were items that were previously studied at the study meeting and were found to be non-controversial and worthy of support and able to be voted on as a singular item. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Motion from Toy, support from McCullough. Is there any audience communication on that? There appears to be none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on the consent agenda, items 1 through 11?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Laura, you're.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda is passed. We will move on to item number 12. Item 12 has to do with a report out of a committee of the whole meeting that was held on January 26 of 2022. We had two issues that were covered at the meeting. The first was from council Resolution 03-22, subject matter of the city's road millage renewal. At this meeting, present for the council were myself, Mr. Barr, Mr. Donavick, Ms. McIntyre, and Mr. Morgan. City officials present, Mayor Brosnan, Clerk Nash, Treasurer Sheel, our city attorney, Mr. Bernier, Finance Director, Mr. Slater, DPW Director, Mr. Roraf, City Engineer, Todd Zalinsik, LaShawn Thomas, Governmental Affairs, and Janine Leibel, Director of Human Resources. So, in regards to that item, the mayor and the city administration gave a presentation in regards to the importance of the city's road millage and the good work that it's done for our community, and the need for us to look at potentially, and I believe going forward, requesting a renewal of that millage so we can continue that good work. After that presentation and the discussion that was held in regards to that, a motion was offered by Mr. Barr to refer that item to the Law Department to prepare the language. I believe that language, as prepared, is the new data received for item 12A. Can I have a motion to approve that language?
So moved.
Support.
Motion from McIntyre, support from Barr. Is there any council communication in regards to that language regarding the renewal of the road millage? I see none. Mr. Barr?
Just a real quick comment, Mr. Chair. It's just worth noting that this has been a just amazingly successful program for the first 20 years. Envy of other municipalities across the state. It's been emulated by other municipalities, and this strikes right at the core functions of what we as a city are to do, and I'm wholeheartedly behind this.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Any audience communication? None. Ms. Nash, please take the roll in regards to this item. Excuse me, the vote, not the roll.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The item passes with the support of all seven council members. We'll move on to the second item that was covered in that committee of the whole meeting. That was in regards to council Resolution 375-21.
Mr. Jolly, may I, President Jolly, may I interrupt for a moment? My understanding, there's two resolutions dealing with that one issue. The first one was to prepare the, to prepare the resolution, and we already took it upon ourselves and had it prepared, which was identical to 10 years ago. And that's actually Resolution B, if the council wanted to vote on it tonight to approve the resolution. That's a separate, we have resolutions A and B within that item.
Okay. So, does anybody?
And the first one, I believe you voted on was A, which was Mr. Barr's to refer to the Law Department for the wording, just to make sure that we're clear about.
Sure.
You voted on that, and we, in this five minutes of period of time, apparently, prepared it, and we have it to you as the proposal.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
Seeing that I basically spoke to Resolution B, I'll offer that approving.
Support.
Barr and McIntyre. Any council comments, audience comments? There are none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. So, the language is officially approved at this point as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernier, keeping us on track. Okay. So, the other item was in regards to the subject matter of requesting an increase in compensation for the classification of Director of Administrative Services to align with current salaries of department heads with similar responsibilities and to retitle that position, the classification of Director of Administrative Services, to Chief of Staff. The same people were present at that meeting. The meeting included Councilmember Barr giving a presentation of his understanding of the issue. An overview was given in regards to the administrative responsibilities of this position, providing specific changes, how the position has changed from 2005 to the present. A justification of changes in the step proposal was presented. An approving resolution was offered by Councilmember Kathleen McIntyre for a new salary structure for the position, and an approving resolution was offered by Councilmember McIntyre for a change in title for this position as well. Counsel, do I have any motions in regards to this? Mr. McCullough?
I'll offer an approving resolution.
Do I have support?
Aye.
Okay. Motion by, is it an approving resolution for the change in salary structure or the change in title?
Can it be both?
The, just, the title, the second one dealing with the title is an ordinance change, and that's in the unfinished business section.
That'd be a first read.
Then that would be a first reading when we get to it.
Proving on this item.
So, for the salary structure, we have a motion by McCullough, a support by Toy. Do we have any council comments on this matter? Ms. McIntyre?
In the committee meeting, the committee of the whole meeting, I had originally suggested that I would like to move ahead with an approving resolution. We had a very, very detailed discussion in that meeting of the roles and responsibilities of everyone on the mayor's staff, and it was relative to who does what and which jobs carry certain responsibilities and which jobs have developed to carry certain responsibilities. And I'm disappointed that in that conversation, the mayor did not share with us that we've retained outside consultants to work on lobbying and lancing. And several years ago, when we were restructuring the office, the mayor had talked about how the advocacy slash lobbying responsibilities would be handled within her staff. And I'm disappointed that we didn't include the fact that we now have these outside consultants assisting her staff with this work. I haven't decided yet how I'm going to vote on this, but I think when we have a discussion, a very granular discussion about roles and responsibilities, it would be very helpful to know when there's additional third-party outside contract help. Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you. Any other council communication? Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just a brief history of this item. This first came to us, I believe, in, I was going to say December, but now that I think about it, it may have been November. And by the way, I've just got a few bullets written out on my computer here, so I'll be glancing down at this just to make sure I stay on topic. But I was the one that asked for this to go to committee, and as I expressed at that time, wasn't necessarily because I was against it then, but I thought there was a broader discussion that had, needed to be had, as Councilwoman McIntyre alluded to. And I wanted the chance to do that in committee. After that, I asked the mayor if we could meet. She graciously agreed, along with some of her staff, and we were able to go have a very substantive discussion about this and, I think, clear up misunderstandings on both sides, or clear up our meetings, anyway, on both sides. I want to thank the mayor for that. I do think, I do see the reason for why this proposal has come forward. And I've found myself on both sides of this in the last few weeks. That said, I have decided not to support this tonight, and I want to clearly explain why. Number one, because I do respect where the mayor's coming from on this and why she's asking for this, and also just because, as I've said before, there's a personal angle to this. The person this most directly affects is a good friend of mine, and so it's very important for me to explain my reasoning for this. So, I'll try to do this as succinctly as I can. First and foremost, this is not just about a salary increase. This is about a reclassification of a job. And our charter calls for Director of Administrative Services. This would propose to relabel it as a Chief of Staff and give it a different salary structure. In one sense, that's just a name change. And to be fair, I mean, I know the mayor already refers to him as a Chief of Staff, and frankly, I've found myself referring to him as that over the last few years. And if it were just a name change, it wouldn't be a big deal. But I think it's, I think it's more than that, which is why this is before us tonight and coming for council approval. We have seen this role grow in a number of ways. I recognize that. But we've also seen some significant changes over the last few years that resulted in, and I won't detail it all tonight, as I did at the committee meeting, but where the responsibilities of this role have to some extent, some extent, been either moved to a different department or shared by another department, one of which this council, at the mayor's request, created about a year and a half ago. And so, when we look at what this role was, while there's some places where the role has definitely increased, there's a number of places where the role is now being shared by at least two other departments. And there's actually a couple other departments that come into the discussion as well. Again, I'm not going to go into that detail tonight. We did that at the committee meeting. If we had not had all that happen and we were just looking at this as it was a few years ago, I would probably have a different view on this. But in looking at that, that's one reason why I struggle with this. It seems that we have, while the role has grown in some ways, we have passed off other aspects of the role, and so it seems odd to be asking for a 20% increase to this, to how we structure the salary of this job. The second point is, in the mayor's contention, and I understand this, The second point is, in the mayor's contention, and I understand this, is that the strategic nature of this role has grown, and I do see that's true in some ways. What concerns me is that this is starting to look like, and I emphasize "look like" because I know it's not called that, but it's starting to look like a deputy mayor approached this position, which is not what our charter calls for. And as I looked at the, the mayor gave us a detailed job description for this role at our committee meeting. I didn't get a chance to really process this until after the meeting, but as I looked through this, there's a number of things on here that I think are directly the job of other department heads, not necessarily a part of this job. And there are a number of things on here that frankly, I think are the mayor's job, not this position's job. And again, I'm not, for the sake of brevity, I'm not going to detail that, I've got them all marked here, but the rest of them, this job, as vital as it is, and it is incredibly vital, and the person who's in that role right now does an amazing job, but it is, it's an assistant role to the mayor, and that's very, very important, but that's different than a department that has the same level of authority and responsibility that some of their other departments have. And I think the mayor even basically acknowledged that in our committee meeting when this deputy mayor comment was brought up, and she said, I'm not quoting because I don't have a recording of it, but it's something to the effect of, no, we purposely wrote this so that it would not denote that level of responsibility, and I actually think that's part of the point. And so again, as difficult as this is because of the personal angle with it, I just, I don't see that, I think this job is appropriately compensated for what it's doing, and I'm not interested in reclassifying it for the long term. So I'm just seeing if there's anything else. Yeah, I think, I think that basically covers it. It's an incredibly important role. If this does pass tonight, I will be the first person to congratulate the person who's in the role and thank him for the excellent job he does, because he does do that. But when looking at this as part of what our job is here, and whether this is the appropriate thing to do for the city, separating the personal angles, separating the politics, what is the right thing for the city, and looking at this role to other department heads and their responsibilities, I just believe the current classification is appropriate. Thanks for hearing me out on that, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, President Jolly. I appreciate my colleague's stance on, and even the thorough documentation that went into it. The way I look at this is just kind of like we looked at it when this item was brought to us, you know, I think a few months ago, just as any of the other salary increases that have been before us, I think we've had probably close to six to 10 that we've currently had. And if I look at this, the Director of Administrative Services have been with the city for a long period of time, and outside of the name change, I think that that position between step one and step five is severely underpaid, just as in some of the other positions that we've made adjustments for. This being the same thing, just like I stated before, if you look up ICMA, which is more of a city manager-run city, the number two, or should we say someone in this classification, would probably be 20% higher than what is even proposed. Understanding this is a strong mayor, and looking at the research of various communities, this position even proposed is still somewhat undervalued compared to some of the comparable communities. And being that, if I'm staring, you know, just directly at the Director of Administrative Services and/or Chief of Staff, I think that this is, this is a valid thing that's long overdue, and I'll be in support of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Anybody else from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, this, this is, this can be a confusing issue at times, yet I do have background as a Chief of Staff, and, and as I look at a Chief of Staff, a Chief of Staff does many things. While it was different in the Senate when I served there, for my boss who was a senator, and I'm a former one, it was just, many times I filled in, many times I had to represent the senator in other capacities, in her sometimes official capacity, because I was a Chief of Staff. The roles that I see this Chief of Staff doing have crossover to them. Some may appear to be the mayor's role to a point, but that's what that person as a Chief of Staff, in my understanding, usually will do. While we can't falsely represent our bosses, so to speak, we certainly take on various roles, including supervising staff, and so it is a big responsibility that has a big coverall on it. And I, the job, at least the Michigan Senate, was a very proud job, but yet it is one that encompasses a whole lot more than just maybe what we're all used to as a management style, particularly in the political arena. It can be sometimes a little more than what it seems at times, and I would hope it doesn't get out of hand, and I don't think it will. I think Dave, who we're talking about, and other individuals within the structure, have done jobs for a while, and so that's why I'm also supporting Mr. McCullough's resolution, because I think, again, the job is a coverall, if you will, and I appreciate us moving forward on something like this, and as one of the council members just said, I don't want it to be a deputy mayor by any means, but I certainly know what a Chief of Staff, of many times, at least in that atmosphere, was responsible for with 31 other people. So I hope that helps a little bit for those of you that are questioning it a little bit. Maybe I didn't make it real clear, but thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Any audience communication on this matter? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote?
Now to be clear, this is on the salary restructure.
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Morgan? Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes, and we will move on to item number 13.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, if I may. I respect all the comments and consideration that's gone into this vote. There's been a lot of discussion back and forth about what this looks like.
Yeah, we're done with this item.
Okay.
You have to speak before the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item number 13, that's a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to amend Chapter 08, Section 020 and 030, Department of Administrative Services, of Title II, Administration and Personnel to Create and Establish a Department Under the Direction of the Chief of Staff to Provide Liaison Between the Mayor and Other Administrative Departments, the Council, and the Community. This would be the item to change the ordinance to effectively create the position of Chief of Staff. We are, the item is looking for a first reading in accordance with the provisions of the law and city charter. Can I get a first reading on this matter?
Council President, I'll offer a first read.
We have a first reading from Mr. McCullough, and that will require a second meeting, followed by a vote at a subsequent meeting. Item number 14, a roll call, proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, Planning and Economic Development Department to amend Section 15.56, Section 035, Permits and Inspection Fees, to add and revise zoning fees, including zoning board of appeal fees, site plan review application fees, waiver and conditional use fees, appeal to city council fee, and zoning amendment fees, and to comport with Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. A first reading was given on this matter by Mr. Barr on Monday, January 31st, 2022.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Barr?
I'd be happy to offer a second reading on this item.
We have a second reading. Is there any comment from the council? Any comment from the audience? Seeing none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on item 14.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The item passes, and we will move on to item 15. Item 15 is a request to approve the Second Amendment to Lease Agreement with 123.net LLC from the Information Systems Department to allow 123.net to provide fiber network connectivity to 16 city facilities. This is an extension of Council Resolution 188-19. I'll note that on a previous incarnation of tonight's agenda, this was on the consent agenda, but was removed per the request of the Law Department to more accurately describe and title the matter before the council. Can I have a motion on item 15?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
I'll offer approving. Support.
Support from Donavick. Any council communication? Audience communication? Seeing none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on number 15, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. Item 16, a Ward of Contract from the Department of Public Works for the Fats, Oils, and Grease, also known as the Fog Prevention Treatment, through December 31, 2023, with the option to extend for an additional two years from budgeted funds. Can I have a motion?
No motion.
Motion from Toy?
Support.
Support from Donavick. Any council communication, comment on this matter? Seeing none. Any audience communication? There is none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. Item 17, a Ward of Contract from the Department of Public Works with Plant Moran Cressa LLC to provide professional engineering services for space needs assessments and capital planning from budgeted funds. Can I have a motion?
Council President?
Mr. McCullough?
I'll offer an approving for purposes of discussion.
Support from Donavick. Counsel, Mr. McCullough?
So I had asked to put this on regular. The agenda item itself is phenomenal. I will stand by that. Someone as a facilities director to be able to have a needs assessment, especially for a lot of our facilities that date back, you know, 60s, 70s, this is the greatest thing in the world. I just had some questions based on the no bid, and while Plant Moran is a phenomenal, they've done great work with the fields, I just wanted to take a little bit more time to do some research, and I am pleased and satisfied with everything that was in the packet, and I wholeheartedly support this resolution. Thank you.
Anybody else from the council? Any audience communication? There is none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. Item number 18 is the Administrative Response to Council Resolution 242-21 from the Office of the Mayor regarding the subject matter of urban environment's concerns. I don't believe this is an item that the council needs to take action on, so we'll note this item and that it will remain in the committee. New Business, item number 19, Request for the Subject Matter of the American Rescue Plan Act, be placed in the Committee of the Whole for Further Discussion from the Finance Director, Mr. Slater, to update council on the final rule governing the expenditure of these grant funds and to discuss the allocation of remaining funds. Can I have a motion?
Well, President?
Toy, can I have support from Donavick?
Support.
Okay. Is there any comment from the council in regards to this matter? Audience communication? None. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes.